Meeting. We have received two public questions and no petitions. Please can I request mobile telephones and such devices are switched to silent as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from town hall staff. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each finance committee member introduce themselves? And I'll start off by introducing myself first because I always forget. So I'm councillor Zhehevenaz. I am the member for the Darnall Ward and I'm also chair of the finance committee. If I can start with you, Mary.
I'm councillor Mary Lee and I represent Darnall Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Ibyulla, Netherwether and Sharrow.
Councillor Toby Mallinson, Hillsborough.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Gleelis Valley.
Councillor Brian Lloyd, member for Burnley Ward.
Sheffield, Mohammed Ecclesall Ward.
Cunys Chapman, Mosborough Ward.
Mike Leavry, West Ecclesfield, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much and welcome. There are no apologies for today's meeting. Item two, exclusions of press and public. All items for today's meeting are open to the press and public. Item number three, is there any declarations of interest? No, no declarations of interest. Item four, minutes of the previous meeting, these can be found in page 11 of the agenda pack. Are we all agreed as a correct record? Yeah, that's fine, that's agreed, thank you very much. Item five, public questions and petitions. We don't have any petitions. We do have two public questions. The questionnaires are not here today to ask the questions, but we will be sending them a written response and we will also send the question response to members of the finance committee as well today. Item number six, members' question. We have received one question that's been submitted by councillor Chapman. Have you had your response?
I have had the response, but not, didn't exactly tell me everything that I wanted to know. I really wanted to know the figures and there aren't any figures there. I know what residual levy is, telling me all about it didn't make any difference.
Would you like the figures?
I would like the figures.
Okay, so we can, we can provide you with the figures for, for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item number seven, the work programme, this is on page 15 of the agenda pack. And Rachel will just go through that for us now, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer. So the work programme is found on page 15 of the agenda pack. It shows all known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings of the committee. There's been two changes to draw your attention to. These are highlighted in part one on page 18. One of these is an item that's moved the lease of Milhouses Park. There's additional time needed to finalise the details of the lease. And then there's also a new item subject to referral from S and R. However, it's provisional at the moment because a query has been raised as to whether this is the right committee for that item. So officers are currently looking into that and will report back to committee. Thank you.
I did have that question, Chair, to say, why are we taking this from S and R? But I was going to raise it S and R to say, we should send it to finance. We should go to Angela's committee, social care.
And we've not had a briefing on that, so I don't even know the full details. So we are seeking to get additional information in regards to that. Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's the, it's the item on Milhouses Park that's been moved again. I'm just wondering, when is it going to go? How confident are we that it's going to come in March? Because it's been moved a couple of times now and that, I know it's been kicking around for some time now. I think we just need to get this, this finalised.
I think what I can do is I can go back and follow that up with officers and sort of express that the committees wish that we try and get this in March. The last time I spoke to them, they just requested that extra time. So I will follow that up with, with the officers.
If we could, because this has been ongoing for over a year now, I think, isn't it? And probably longer.
Councillor Mallison?
Thank you, Chair. It's just the items that haven't, that haven't got a date set yet. So it's levelling up prospectus and Parkwood Springs. Is there, is there any timescales on those?
Thank you, Chair. So the Parkwood Springs item, I believe this has been added to the transport regeneration work programme now. So we were just waiting for confirmation that that would be going to that committee because it relates to a grant which now fall under the relevant policy committees. The levelling up prospectus, I did request an update from officers on that. And it's, it's likely that there's parts of that which now fall under other committees as well, but I will, I will follow that one up for members.
Thank you for that, Rachel. Okay, so are we, are we all okay with the work programme? Yeah, that's fine, thank you very much. That's unanimous. Item number eight is the capital approvals for month nine. And Damien will be presenting this and this can be found on page 27 of the agenda pack.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Damien Watkinson. I'm the finance manager in the capital team, here to present the changes and additions to the capital programme that have been brought forward through the approvals process this month. I'll do as I usually do and I'll take each committee area in turn and a brief summary of, of each, each change. So under transport, regeneration and climate change, bringing forward the levelling up fund grant to S1 art space. This is coming from the, the Castle Gate levelling up fund allocation. It's 2.6 million to S1 art space to deliver a, a new gallery space within the Castle Gate area. Appendix two will also provide details of the terms and conditions we're going to enter into that grant funding agreement with S1 art space on, which will spell out the, the milestones that we'll be making payments on and the various amounts that will, will be delivered at those points. Under the future high streets fund, there's a move of 90K from the front door scheme, which was a larger grant into the renew section, which are smaller grants under £50,000. So that's just a movement of funds between those two different grant schemes. There's also slippage of 860K on the larger grants into next financial year when the remainder of those payments will be made. On the levelling up fund, again on the castle site, there's been an issue at the Market Tavern. So that building where we were going to be spending money refurbishing that initially has had to be demolished. So we're reprofiling the remainder of the funding that relates to that area into future years until it's decided what the next steps are going to be following that decision to demolish. Under the clean air zone, there's been a central review, a central government review, sorry, of the effectiveness of the retrofit technology that's gone into buses. So as a result, we're pausing the grant scheme for retrofitting buses and coaches with clean air technology until the conclusion of that, that government review and that is at government's request. Communities, parks and leisure, there's been some work at Forge Dam restoration work and as part of that restoration work and the desilting of the pond, it's uncovered a sluice gate that we were unaware of until that point, which needs some remedial work undertaken to it. So there's a shift of some funds and additional small amount into a new project to look at the sluice gate and look at the works that might be required in order to fix and maintain that. There's, there's opportunities there to improve the use of that for flood mitigation. And I know some local groups looking at possibility of, of some hydro electrical generation using that. So that's an additional piece of work that we're undertaking. At Milhouses Park, we've received funding to install changing places toilets, so an accessible toilet which will be installed near the boating pond there. So there's been 120K grant from government and we're putting in an additional 15K from our own resources to deliver that. Then we've got improvements at Baitmore, Concord Park and Parsons Cross. So there's CCTV, additional funding going in for that at Baitmore, some public rights of way funding going into Concord Park to improve the pathways there. And then some additional local area committee funding has gone into Parsons Cross to put additional gold lens and rugby posts in at the scheme there. Also Freshville Park's moving on to its next phase of development. Under housing, there's a footpath scheme. So some, so we have some pass access roads that don't, aren't adopted under the Streetshead contract. So they are the responsibility of the HRA to maintain and we're allocating 200K to the renewal and improvement of some of those pathways that have been identified as requiring improvements. We're also moving on to the next stage in the tower blocks fire safety. So this is, it's phase three of that programme. So it's looking at the improvements on closing bin chutes, improving safety systems, detections at 20 fire blocks. So it's improving compartmentation, detection and access for fire and rescue services. So that's approximately £18 million that's been spent across 20 tower blocks. There's a small amount of slippage on the Eriksen Estate improvements work that we were doing. Again, that was around safety around the bin stores. That work's largely going to take place next year now. Under education, children and families, there's a 50K being paid to Hind House School under the Brigantia Trust to develop an integrated resource there for special educational needs. So Hind House being through school, there's going to be some places in primary and some in secondary as well. Under essential compliance and maintenance, which sits on the strategy and resources committee, we're increasing the total budget for the Abidale Dam leaks programme to 970,000 following, it's an increase of around 600,000 following the assessment of the site and the works that are thought to be needed now in order to make, make dam safe and maintain the cultural assets around that, around that site. And then also I'm putting in a formal recognition of some allocations of funding, so some capital receipts and some revenue contributions that have been made for the overall essential compliance and maintenance programme. So a few years ago, £6 million was made available from capital receipts and then the, the service have been making some revenue contributions to capital maintenance that needs to take place. So I'm putting in approximately 3.7 million as an allocation just to give visibility of what's remaining of that funding at the moment that's approved to deal with the essential compliance and maintenance matters. So in future, when you see things like this Abidale Dam leak come forward, you'll see a condescension reduction in these allocations. So I'm just putting them here so that we've got that visibility now of what's left actually as, you know, formally identified to fund these works. I've mentioned in appendix two, the grant that we've got for the S1 art space. And then just to say, in appendix three, there's a recommendation to accept a grant from Sheffield City Region Combined Authority in relation to the city region sustainable transport settlement for the A6135 corridor. So out towards the Northern General Hospital. It's an initial development grant of three and a half million for what is anticipated to be around a £25 million scheme of various pedestrian bus and active travel improvements down that corridor into the town centre. So again, next month, I expect to see the business case brought forward to spend that 3.5 million, but this is just to accept that funding so we can do that before the financial year end and the combined authority will transfer those funds. So that's my brief summary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Damien. Got a few questions. Councillor Mohammed?
Mine was more of a comment, Chair. Happy to do the comments?
Shall we do questions first?
Yeah, do the questions.
Yeah, I'll do questions first. Councillor Lodge? Councillor Chapman?
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. On page 45 is a list of roads, little council property roads that have been done up. Are there any more roads? Because I know of one that's not on the list and I wondered whether there's going to be another list for next year.
I think that's quite likely. They've had ongoing allocations for this non, sorry, non-adopted highways works. They've been prioritised as best they can. They've worked with neighbourhood teams to work within the funding allocation. But generally, yes, we tend to see this coming forward each year with the next tranche of, of sites to be delivered.
Right, thank you very much.
Councillor Elliott?
Thank you, Chair. Just regarding page 33, the Market Tavern. So my understanding is that the demolition work was paused after an agreement with heritage campaigners, but then was knocked down. It says it had to go, undergo emergency demolition, although initially it had been said that it had fallen down. So I think due to this confusion and lack of transparency and internal investigation has been promised, is that right?
Sorry, I'm afraid I'm not aware of that. So if that's the case, yeah, that was quite possible. But I was only bringing forward the, the variations to the finances as a result of this. Yes, this, this wording was amended following the initial, we were slipping some of the budgets initially and then this wording was provided to me as amended sort of later in the day. So yeah, I'm not aware of the detail what's happened, I'm sorry.
Okay, because my question was really just about the investigation and if we know, you know, when it's likely to be completed and obviously it does seem like quite serious with conflicting information being given out and if it's going to go to our, like, internal audits. So if, yeah, we could get a response.
Yes, I'm not aware on that one.
Sorry, I was just saying, I think it'll probably go to the relevant policy committee. Obviously Damien's brought this as part of the capital programme which deals with the finance and the slippage of the capital programme. That's an investigation regarding the handling of a particular set of circumstances. It may not be this committee that comes back to, but I would expect that there would be some report on it. So it's possible we could get that information from members and find out where it's going to go.
Thank you, yeah.
Councillor Mohammed?
Yeah, thank you, Damien. It's more of a comment around, well, two items, but fortunately I'm in particular. As someone who's having building work done at home, you know, these things happen that you take some plaster down and then you discover that the wiring's not quite as good. And similarly, we've got this situation that was of deep concern that, you know, this slurry gate issue. But actually, I think I welcome the comment that we're now going to take it as an opportunity and potentially look at some renewable energy opportunities as well as mitigations against flooding because clearly whenever there's a large amount of rainfall, you know, we do see that Encliff Park does get flooded. So welcome that opportunity and strongly support the investigations into doing renewable energy. And similarly, I think as a local councillor, Milhouses Park is really important for me and to see that we're going to upgrade the toilets and take the opportunity to again look at the power supply issues at the cafe because the cafe is really well used and, you know, I've been there, had meetings with residents many a times and so therefore the opportunity that arises here, I think it's really important that we take them to upgrade for future possible extensions and usages. So well done on both, Damien.
Thank you, councillor Lee.
I just wanted to mention, it's a comment really on Eriksen Way Estate, just because it's in Mylack area and I know we've been updated on a lot of the issues, mainly antisocial behaviour that have been occurring on that estate. And another two councillors up there, Ben Misklin, councillor Malama, have done a lot of work on that and I just wanted to highlight that. And, and so one of the culminations of that is they're putting their so money into putting some physical works in, obviously that's identified here. So I think that was a job well done for them.
Yes, indeed. Councillor Ulla?
Good, Chair. Chair, I've got a question or a comment. Can I start with a question, please? Damien, thank you for your presentation regarding the fire safety assessment of the tower blocks. I've got three tower blocks in my ward in Netherwether Sharrow, but those three simply have been missed out. Does that mean they are complying in terms of fire safety?
I'd have to take that back to the housing colleagues and double check on that.
Please, please do, sir. My comment is regarding on page 31, I'm really welcome the S1 art space grant which will go towards the purchase and refurbishment of premises in Castle Gate for the creation of larger contemporary art space. I believe this will enhance our city's cultural offering. I do so part of a wider programme of Castle Gate programme and of course programme to regenerate our city. Chair, I think this is a very positive news and our city is truly, is on the up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Ulla, councillor Lodge?
Thank you. I'd just comment, a couple of comments there, Chair. The, the Freshville Park is fantastic to see that coming through and for the scoot track, it's, it's an area, I used to play in there many, many years ago as a child. So it holds great memories somewhere there and it's good to see that it's coming back in. And the scoot track, the, the Burnley Ward councillors, we developed a skate park, skateboard park further down in Hackenthorpe some years ago and that's used heavily by kids with scooters as well as skateboards. And, and it, it's one of the things that you can get in and it gets really well used and we listened to the kids themselves at the time in the youth parliament when we developed that. So this will be a really welcome addition in there in Freshville in, in going through. And I think, you know, it's taken a long time, but we are getting there and have seen it come through. So I welcome that coming through. And the other one is a, is a comment around the dam at Abidale Industrial Hamlet. Because from memory, this must be about the third time that we've, we've done work on the dam there. And I just hope that we're going to try and finally get to the bottom of it because we seem to be spending large amounts over the, over the last few years in trying to resolve it and coming through. It's, it's a comment, it's not there for you, Damien. I know that it's for the other committee to deal with, but it, it's, it, it's frustrating when you go past. I went past it the other day and it's drained and the level's down again and it doesn't look as inviting as it ought to do. But it, it's a lot of money that's been spent to try and bottom that. So it'll be good to see if we get it sorted. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Damien. I think just, just a reminder that Damien does a very good job of presenting the capital approvals every month and every month you do get asked questions that are not really related to what we're approving today. So do check which policy committees the decisions have come through and maybe ask questions of other chairs. Damien is here for the capitals and the finance side of the approvals. There's some really positive comments here today and I think it's really good projects and improvement measures in, in this report. And I think they really benefit residents across Sheffield. So thank you very much. There is recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you, Damien. Right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. And this is item nine, you can find this on page 65 of the agenda pack and it's amendment to council tax long-term empty premium and introduction of second home premium. And John West and Adam, licence to talk on this, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's John West, I'm Senior Revenues and Benefits Manager and I'm here to present the report about the council tax long-term empty premium and the introduction of second home premium. This is my colleague, Adam License.
Hi, I'm Adam License. I'm Assistant Policy and Support Manager in John's Policy and Support Team.
Okay, so the report recommends that the finance committee notes the new powers which will enable the council to make changes to the council tax long-term empty premium from 24, 25 and the ability to introduce a new council tax premium for second homes from 25, 26 and agrees to adopt these powers and if so, determine whether the long-term empty premium from empty and substantially unfurnished dwellings which are empty for more than 12 months is introduced in 2024 or 2025. Currently, where a substantially unfurnished dwelling has been empty for two years, the council tax charged is increased by a premium of 100%. This premium increases to 200% if the dwelling remains empty for five years and to 300% after 10 years. The Levelling Up and Regeneration Act 2023 now allows councils to apply the 100% premium after one year instead of two. We estimate that over 1,000 dwellings would become subject to the long-term empty premium if the council chose to reduce the period from two years to one year and generate additional council tax revenue of over 1 million. Although it's fair to say that 200,000 of this would come from the council's own empty properties and 15% would go to precepting authorities. The intention is to encourage more empty homes to be brought into productive use, increase the supply of available housing, reduce the potential impact of antisocial behaviour associated with areas of high numbers of empty properties and to enable the council to raise and retain additional revenue to support local services. The Act also introduces a second home premium and this allows councils to increase the council tax charge on dwellings which are furnished but not an individual's primary residence by a premium of 100%. There are currently 509 dwellings recording as being second homes on our council tax system, which would increase the total amount of council tax charged to these dwellings by £874,000. The Act states that if the council wishes to enact the second home premium, it must do so at least one year before the beginning of the final year, financial year to which it relates. And this means that the earliest date that the council can introduce the second home premium is April 2025. Therefore, the committee is asked to decide if it agrees to introduce the second home premium from April 2025 and whether it agrees to reduce the period for applying the long-term empty premium from two years to 12 months and if so, from April 2024 or April 2025.
Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, thanks, John, for that. It's a couple of questions really. From when we brought about the change previously, did we see an impact on reducing the number of empty properties? Did it, did it have a, did we see them drop down in effect? So it's just understanding, is this going to have that effect to get the empty properties? Because that's what we all want to see, we want to see the empty properties back in use. So how confident are we that it will do what it's intended to do and then it's not just seen as a means of raising more money? And then the, the second question is, did you say £300,000 to the council, the cost of the, to the council precept?
No, the council's own empty properties would be liable for the premium and that's 200,000.
200,000, apologies, I got the figure wrong. It's just trying to understand what that is, if it's, if it's properties that have been empty for 12 months, but the council's got the, that's sitting there.
Yeah, there's a variety of them. I don't know if you know, Adam, if there's any.
The properties at Park Hill, they're not affected by reducing the period of time which the long-term empty premium, because they've been empty for over 10 years, so they're already subject to the long-term empty premium. With regards to the council owned dwellings, I understand that it's part of the programme of acquiring properties and it's getting those back into use. So it's those dwellings that are most likely to be subject to the charge, the premium rather than the regular churn of voids.
Right, and, and the impact on this, whether it sees properties come back in? Do we have evidence that people do respond and bring properties back into use?
I'll have to go back and check, but my understanding is that the, the number of long-term empty dwellings has been relatively static. So if there's a churn of new properties coming on and one coming off, but it hasn't, it is, I understand that it's to bring back a great deal and a large number of dwellings back into use. It's just been a relatively constant state.
If I, if I may just, I, I think, I welcome it coming in to try and get properties back into use. And I think because we have to give one year's notice, it, it's enough to get people out there and get them to know. So I think as long as we get this publicised, then it might see people actually making a difference and, and doing some work and returning properties to use. But it is a bit frustrating that the council's going to incur additional £200,000. And, you know, if you're saying it's, this is properties over 12 months that have been empty. I, I understand we've got things like park lodges and things like that that are going to be included in there, but it seems a rather a large amount of money to be, to be in there. It's not, it's not a correct answer on that, it's just a comment really on there. Thanks, Chair.
Can you just make a point of clarification regarding the 12 months leading time? The 12 months leading time applies to the second home premium not changed. So the decision for the committee today is if they want to reduce the period of long-term empties from 12, 24 months to 12 months, whether to do it from April 2024 or April 2025, that's a choice of the council.
Well, in, in that case, let's get some publicity out there and get people to know so they, they don't feel stung by this when it comes through.
Councillor Chapman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. At the moment, there are more and more people in 10
At the moment, there are more and more people in temporary housing, policy people just in inappropriate places. The void system isn't working with council housing. We're not turning them around quick enough. Are we sure that this policy is going to work and that we're going to reduce the number of empty properties and get people out of temporary housing?
Well, I think as Adam's just mentioned, that the level of empty housing has been fairly static since this was introduced. So that's not clear that it would have that impact. In terms of the turnaround on temporary accommodation, I'm not sure if I can comment on that. Adam has some more insight into that.
Yeah, people being placed in bed and breakfast accommodation by our colleagues in Housing Solutions as pursuant to our homeless prevention duties. I don't really see how, what we're proposing here will have much of an impact on the number of people in temporary accommodation.
Thank you.
councillor Leverie.
Thanks, Chair. I've done a little bit of research on this. In 2019, there were 6,200 empty properties. It's now just under 7,000, so it's gone up by round about 800 or so. The great issue we've got here is that we've had a 50% increase in band A properties that have been empty for more than 10 years. So none of these long-term empty properties are getting sorted out. They're actually growing in terms of numbers. And the vast majority of empty properties are either in band A or band B. So the lowest value of properties in the city, 83% of empty properties are in band A and band B. Which means that if you want to turn them around and you want to invest in them to bring them back, you're actually penalized by this policy. Because if you buy an empty property that's 10 years old, you have to pay three times the council tax on top of your investment just to get it back in, unless you get an exemption. And under the exemptions that have been granted so far, somebody buys an empty property that's that old, they won't be exempt. So it's a barrier to sale and it's a barrier to getting some of these properties back into use again. And that's my great concern with this policy. It's been in place since 19. It's brought in by, of course, the Tory government. And, you know, what is the incentive to get these properties back into occupation? Thanks, Chair.
councillor Mohammed.
Yeah, I was going to follow up councillor Leverie's, because that was my understanding, that the numbers have gone up since 2019. And we need to understand, I mean, I'm for bringing empty homes into use. And as I shared earlier, my experience of renovating a house does uncover lots of issues. And I think one of the barriers could be that if somebody does take on a long-term empty, like councillor Leverie says, a 10-year empty property, in my view, will have some damage if the roof's not being maintained or fixed and plastering, et cetera. And often these projects are a couple of months, they're often a year and a half. So for me, it's, we want to just raise revenue, then we can just nod it through and get this policy adopted today and take the money in. But for me, that wasn't the driver behind our motion. It was about actually bringing in properties that are being empty, trying to understand what the barriers are. And I think for us, I think what we'd like to see, Chair, is if someone takes up a property, we reset the clock. Because if someone's left an empty and probate might be an issue or something for the last five, 10 years, they've been penalized if they stepped forward to take the property on. What I'd like, and I'm sure my colleagues here would like, is if someone buys a property, the clock's reset. They get a year possibly, if not more. And then, you know, we can go back to it. And I think that's something that, I think, I don't know if legal wants to comment on, because there's a conversation that's been had with Dave Hollis, that I would welcome your comments, Sarah.
Can I just, can you start that? We did consider this amendment, which would mean that properties empty between one and five years. If they were sold, the buyer had a year exemption to allow them to get unrefurbished. Over five years, whereas councillor Mohammed said, it's a lot more work to do to get them back in, together with things like properties that are listed, homes that are listed, homes of townscape merit, that are in conservation areas where it takes a long time to go through the process to get approval for any renovation work that's done, will mean that somebody who takes on a listed building could well be looking at paying three times the council tax anyway. And we want our listed buildings back into use and back into operation. So the thrust of our argument was that for up to five years, there's a one-year allowance and over five years, together with listed buildings and buildings of townscape merit, two-year allowance to allow those properties to be refurbished and brought back in, which would enable them to be saleable. And at the moment, they're not. Thank you.
I don't know whether you want me to respond now or a few hands shot up and I don't know whether you want to take those questions before I respond.
Yeah, I'll take the question and I'll come back to you, Sarah. Just coming back to councillor Mohammed and councillor Leverie's point. Would individuals be able to apply for exemptions? Because wouldn't there? Would you, for a property, for example, that's grade two listed and might need a bit more time to renovate it, would you look at this case by case? How would that work?
There is an opportunity to look at exemptions on a case-by-case basis. But there's a clause called section 13, which gives the councils discretion to reduce the amount of council tax due. And they are looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, councillor Malison.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a little bit confused about what's being discussed because the proposal before us is about increasing the levy for one-year-old to two-year-old properties that are empty. I don't see why we're talking about 10-year-old properties or changing national law, which we can't do. So I think that the point is what happens with those early years homes, which maybe are statistically more likely to be able to get back in. Because if it's been standing up for 10 years, one can imagine there'll be significant problems with it. You know, but that's a different discussion for another day, I would suggest. I would like to just ask a question about why, there is a sort of double benefit here, obviously. One is that we want to get empty homes back into use and encourage that. And there is also times of extreme financial uncertainty, the prospect of having some money to spend on homes, which is really important. So the money's not going to be available that is raised if we do adopt this. The money won't be available until the next financial year. I was just wondering if we could have some clarification on why that is. I've got some speculation on why it is, but it'd be useful to know why money has to wait to be spent until financial year 25/26, rather than this financial year.
It's to do with the decision-making cycle for the tax base. Unfortunately, because that cycle's already in progress, we're not able to build the revenue from this year into this year's tax base. But it still will be available. We're not available until the following year.
Okay. So, yeah, but then there will be a lump sum available, you know, a sort of windfall, if you like, that could be spent on homes in that, in subsequent financial year.
Yeah, I mean, it isn't designated for any particular spending, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Elliot.
Thanks. Mine's just a quick comment. And I think, you know, we are in the midst of a national housing crisis with thousands of empty properties, so kind of be irresponsible not to encourage homes to be lived in. That's all.
councillor Lee.
We're here just to look at the recommendations and agree them. And then to have something else thrown in the mix that we don't, that it sounds very, very complex to me. It would be difficult to therefore approve anything else. So I think we just stick to this. But ask for a report back and then look at, I've just got this vision of people swapping homes when they come to the times that they're liable to the exemption goes. I mean, I'm just speculating, all sorts of things, we don't know. And if somebody takes on a listed building, they know what they're taking on because, you know, not many ordinary folk would take on that without looking into it. And people who maybe take on that will have, maybe have the resources to comply with all the regulations that apply to listed buildings. So I don't think we can agree anything other than what's on the table now that officers have recommended.
Thank you. councillor Lodge.
Yeah, thanks. It's just commenting back to councillor Mohammed and councillor Leverie. I understand what you're saying on there, but I think past experience shows us where developers have properties that they're going to renew or refurbish. Whatever happens, it doesn't proceed. It then transfers to another company, which may be the same developer but a different company. It then, it may get sold on the open market again. So it could be that this is just sat there all the time and it's not coming back into use and that you're resetting the clock each time. So I think there's an unexpected danger, I suppose, in the suggestion that it could, it could reset when it moves through and developers may move to a different company within the group. Or, you know, where does that sit? Because I suppose the council taxpayer is the owning, the owner, and if it's in a different, within a group and things. So it consequently, consequences of some of these things within there. So I would just say stick with it as we're recommended here. Thanks.
So I'm just going to bring Sarah in. Is there any further questions or comments? Or Adam, do you want to come in? Okay.
Yes, please. Okay. Thank you, Chair. It's just in response to councillor Leverie's comments about the number of empty dwellings. I think there's a difference between an empty dwelling and a long-term empty dwelling. So there aren't 5,000 long-term empty dwellings. There are currently 900 and odd long-term empty dwellings, which potentially could be increased by a third of 1,000. But a lot of those empty dwellings must obviously be empty and then come back into use within that two-year period at the moment. So it's just that, just to make it clear that there's not six to, or five to 6,000, what would be subject to this premium.
Thank you for that, Adam. Sarah?
Yeah, so councillor Leverie did discuss with us whether or not an amendment could be proposed. The advice was that we would have to advise the committee. They didn't have the necessary information to vote on that amendment today for a lot of the reasons you've been discussing, that there is information about the implications of that that wasn't available to you. There isn't in the legislation that you're discussing today, specific provision for exemptions or for us to create exemptions. There is a separate power that John's already referred to, section 13A of the Local Government Finance Act 1992. The sub-paragraph of that allows the council or any billing authority to reduce to such extent as the billing authority sees fit a council tax bill. We do that at the moment on a case-by-case basis. It might well be possible to propose something more along a policy along the lines that was being proposed. But that would need to be something that the council would need to consider as a separate item. And that would need to be looked at with all the necessary implications, the resource implications, the financial implications, how that might be operated to ensure it met the specific objectives the council had in mind. Councillor Lodge has referred to the possibility of people moving it around groups, you know. Would we want to make it so that it was only if it had been advertised on the open market, something like that? So there's quite a few things that you would need to consider. And I use the phrase you. It's the council would have to consider this matter was referred to you for decision by strategy and resources. A decision to look at that kind of policy under section 13A would sit with strategy and resources. There's not specific power in the constitution for you to refer matters to strategy and resources, but you could suggest that it might be something that they want to look at. If you wanted to do that today, that would be within your remit. But in terms of the actual recommendations, the ones that have been set out by the officers, the ones available to you today, to either not apply it at all, to apply it in 24/25 or to apply it in 25/26.
Thank you, Sarah. That clarified that. Okay, so we are going to go on to the recommendations now. And the recommendations that we are looking at today is not the new powers, which enable the council to make changes to the council tax long-term empty premium from 24/25 and the ability to introduce a new council tax premium for second homes from 25/26. So the earliest that we can apply the council tax long-term empty premium is from 1st of April 24. But for the second homes, it will be from 25/26. So are we agreeing to adopt these powers? And if so, determine whether the council tax long-term empty premium for dwellings empty and substantially unfurnished for more than 12 months is introduced 24/25 or 25/26? So the earliest we can adopt this is 1st of April 24 this year?
I think there's one, are we doing it in two parts? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do it. Okay. Yeah, I think if you vote on four individually. Yeah, it might be helpful.
Okay, so for the second homes, are we happy and do we agree for that to start 25/26? Because we have to give a year's notice. Yeah, that's fine. That's unanimous. Yeah. And the long-term premium one, for the empty homes, for that to start this year from the 1st of April 2024? That's the earliest we can apply that. Are we happy with that? Yeah? Okay, so that's agreed. So that's fine. That's unanimous. So the first recommendation, so are we okay with that? So that's the recommendations. Is that clear enough? Okay, so both recommendations are passed and they're unanimous. So thank you very much. We got there in the end.
Can we agree to ask SNR, following investigation in terms of the issues that we've raised, for that to be referred to SNR by this committee?
So that would be to develop a policy around this, wouldn't it? Yeah, exemptions.
Do you want to recommend to SNR?
Yeah, yeah.
The board by mine, second by me.
An additional recommendation.
So councillor Leverie's proposed that we look at developing a policy around this and for it to, we can't refer to strategy and resources, but obviously it would go to Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. And councillor Mohammed has seconded that proposal. Councillor Malison?
Obviously, I haven't had time to really discuss this, but the sort of counter-argument to developing a new policy is, is the current situation unacceptable in any way where officers have to have discretion? I've got no evidence to suggest that discretion isn't applied in a reasonable way, in a professional way. I'm just questioning whether we need to create more paperwork and work in general, when it might not be needed.
Okay, so this, I think we're going to have to take it to Walt.
Well, I'm just trying to understand where does that fit in with the decision of the council meeting the other week? Because this was mentioned as part of the motion. Where does it sit with that if the council moves it? Where does it fit? Is the council the, not supreme, but you know what I mean? Their decisions take priority over decisions of this body or strategy?
take priority over decisions of this body or Strategy and Resources?
I'll, so so um councillor Lodge, I think he's asking in regards to the motion, uh, that was passed out full council last week. Councillor Leverie, do you want to come in?
Yeah, because part of the motion talked about incentives for for disposal property, and what we're saying here is these are the sort of incentives we want to look at to ensure that um we do get our empty homes down. Thank you.
So it might actually come up anyway, that Strategy and Resources, regardless of the vote here, actually. I would argue.
I think that, yeah, because, yeah, because it was in the, yeah, in the motion, I'm thinking that would probably be unpacked somewhere else and 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 looked at Strategy by Strategy and Resource. Anyway, councillor Elliot, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I think that's probably answered my question. Um, I was going to say, what if we did agree to something, it'd probably just be a recommendation anyway, wouldn't it? But I was just going to ask the experts, um, you know, what your advice is on this proposal, does, is it necessary? Would it add anything, bearing in mind there already are discretionary powers anyway?
I'm not sure whether we can answer that, to be quite honest. Uh, I mean, there are, as you say, there are discretionary powers, I suppose if there was a policy, it would be advertised, it would be communicated, so I suppose it'd be more public, it'd be more transparent. Having said that, I mean, concerns raised, I think from the officer point of view, um, to highlight some of the difficulties it could be in administering it, especially if people are trying to see it as a loophole. Uh, so it has to be examined really closely, I think, to see how it would operate in practice and make sure that it, its objectives were aimed and they weren't subverted in some way.
Yeah, I could just add to that, we have exercised our discretionary powers in scenarios such as this, where because of the the purpose of the second home premium is to bring property back into use, so where somebody's purchased a property and is renovating it, we have used our powers to remove, effectively remove the premium to bring the charge back down to 100% charge. So we'd have to know. But as John said, it's, it's, the section 13A, it's on the council website, but it's not very well known, so it might be, if you get a policy, we might get more requests. But I'm, that's just a fact.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest those discretionary powers are probably sufficient, but yeah, maybe we need to go to the vote.
Yeah, I I think I I I agree. I think um there is things in place that will look at exemptions and you can apply your discretionary powers. Um, and also it's part of the motion anyway, so.
Can I just read out the motion, just for benefit everyone? Especially, it it's N O, so N O, uh, request Strategy and Resources Committee consider adding to its work programme, one, investigate ways of increasing council tax on empty properties and second homes, obviously we brought it here instead, showing through consideration of complex circumstances, and formulating policy to intensivise the renovation retrofit of empty homes such as resetting to the standard council tax rate upon sale. I think we all voted for that last week or so.
Okay, so I think it looks like i- i- it that will end up with Strategy and Resource uh anyway, so I don't think we need to vote on 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 the proposal today. So we'll go back on to the recommendations um that we've already passed and and we've all agreed, so 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 that's fine. I think that's resolved that issue. Thank you very much, John and Adam. Okay, so moving on to the next item, um, this is item 10, page 73 of the agenda pack. Um, and this is the finance committee climate statement. Over to you, Philip, when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair, and uh, good afternoon. Uh, so each of the committees is being presented with a climate statement for members to approve in their committee. Uh, this follows the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee on the 11th of December, who approved the annual climate progress report, um, which reiterated our commitment to be a net zero city by 2030. It highlighted the performance that had been made already, but also highlighted the challenges that we still face in delivering on those ambitions. Um, what this policy statement does, it sets out the commitments um for each committee uh to commit to in order to play their part in delivering on our climate ambitions. And so pages 87 and 88 of your pack set out the statements that have been um requested that this committee commits to. Um, and so page 87 has a list of bullet points in the second half of that page, which document how this committee can play their role in delivering on the climate committee statements. And then in particular, page 88 sets out a table of key actions, which we've identified as being particular actions that relate to the work of the committee, um, which will see on an ongoing basis, where we can make sure that we are, making sure we've got the relevant checks and balances in place, so that we can achieve our ambition in terms of our climate commitments and accelerate our progress towards being net zero by 2030. I'm happy to take any questions that members might have on that.
Thank you. Um, Philip, there isn't any further questions or comments in regards to that, so I'll go on to the recommended. Councillor Malison?
Um, just say thanks for producing this. Um, uh, I think it is important to have these, these things um in in writing, um, and so they can be referred to. Um, I'm obviously relatively new in terms of being a councillor, um, and one thing that has struck me has been the sort of lack of willingness, and I'm not not casting blame on anyone, but there is a, that's more culture than anything else, to to work together as political parties on, on the climate issue, because often things sort of founder, um, when when they're not coordinated and when not sort of singing with one voice, and what is a, a massive emergency for the whole world and for Sheffield as well. So um, I hope that we can in future work, work more closely together before meetings to um discuss what, you know, we 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 want to see in and out of motions and and, you know, how we can possibly raise funds to 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 pay for, uh, to go above and beyond for Sheffield, to 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 make us a leader, attract green investment and so on, uh, into the future. So just a plea really, and a hope. Thank you.
I think on that, you will see on page 87, that first bullet point refers to a climate impact assessment tool, something we've developed and will use and you'll see in future reports. And it will clearly spell out then the consideration of climate in each report that you've been asked to consider. So hopefully that will help stimulate that discussion.
Thank, thank you very much, Philip. I think it's really important that we are, and we do restate, you know, our cross-party council commitment um to taking what action we can to address the climate emergency um for our city and council. So thank you very much for that, um, and thank you, there isn't any further questions or um comments in regards to that, but they are recommendations for us. Um, are we all agreed? Yeah? Thank you, that's unanimous. Um, and that's all for today's meeting. Thank you very much. The next meeting is on the 18th of March, um, and I'll see you all soon. Thank you very much.